Thank you. This is one of my favorite nights. Dr. Rumpus, you're on.
Thank you. Hopefully it'll also be one of my favorite nights as well when by the time we're done. And I'm actually going to turn things over to Dr. Granu pretty quickly. But Board, we are excited to have our elementary school leadership teams here with us this evening to talk about the work that exists in their strategic plans for this year by buildings. In my short time in the district, I would tell you that I continue to be impressed with this incredible group of leaders. Not only their instructional knowledge, their ability to lead teaching and learning in their schools, but also their focus on meeting students' social-emotional needs, and really a deep commitment to making sure that every one of their students and their staff members feel heard, seen, and valued in their schools. And when we talk about school leaders, we talk about wanting both sides of that, and it's hard to find that, but I believe we have 10 leaders with us here tonight who really exemplify that, and we are lucky as a district to have them as part of our team. They are focused on continuous improvement, and tonight you're going to hear some of the details of things that they have in place that are going well, some opportunities for improvement. They're incredibly reflective. And so we will follow the same format as last year where there will be several slides that look at some of the key initiatives that our buildings have in common and that you would see in all five of our elementary schools, and really in most of our schools. And then each school is going to have an opportunity to talk about some of the specific details happening at their schools. So I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Granu. And do we also need to do introductions? I don't want to assume that every board member has met all 10 of these administrators, but maybe we'll start with President Motika, and we'll just go around the circle and introduce yourselves to everybody.
I'm Judy Motika.
Scott Coates, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Lisa Neiman.
Jeremy Matt, Executive Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Matt Bailey, Assistant Superintendent.
Liz Granu, Assistant Superintendent.
Brian Painter, Principal at Tillman.
Max Hoover, Assistant Principal at Tillman.
Daniel Hect, Assistant Principal at Kaiser.
Alyssa Taylor, Principal at Kaiser.
Julie Harris, Principal Westchester.
Adrian Fox Ray, Assistant Principal at Westchester.
Lika Nari, Principal at Robinson.
John Born, Director of Development.
Steph Mertesacker, Board Secretary.
Leah Tomford, Executive Director of Strategic.
Brian Ridge, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Laura Hepburn, Board Member. I'm doing this because we got complaints previously, so I just want to remind everyone to use the mics because apparently some people do watch these on YouTube.
Steph Dejerk, Chief Communications Officer.
Nicole Scharn.
Dr. Nicole Scharn.
Elizabeth Black, Executive Director of MTSS.
Jean Marie Andrews, School Board Member.
Laura Heinrich, Board Secretary.
And Max, I will apologize that we have declared work sessions no tie zones, and we did not share that message with you this evening, but you are welcome to leave it on or remove it as you feel comfortable.
Brian did let me know right when I walked in, but I feel like it really ties my outfit together. Sort of balances out the unkempt look of my beard, so I feel like it kind of all comes out in the wash.
Thanks, Max. We appreciate that. Good evening to everyone. So I'm excited to introduce and share our elementary leaders and their plans for the 25-26 school year. So tonight you'll notice strong themes of collaboration and a unified, unwavering belief that every student can and will learn at high levels. Tonight you'll hear about the powerful work that's happening across our schools, the strength of WinTime professional learning communities, learning labs, and our continued focus on literacy instruction through the link. You will hear about restorative practices, the IDEA Lab, and our new math resource designed to enhance math instruction, support differentiation, and job-embedded professional development for our teachers. Our ultimate goal is clear, and that is to ensure our youngest mathematicians have a cohesive and connected journey in math from kindergarten to high school graduation. You're also going to hear how our leaders create a culture of belonging and engagement in every elementary building across the district. We also know there are ongoing questions about the time throughout the day dedicated to recess and movement breaks, and we're actively gathering feedback on current elementary schedules, looking closely at pacing, student experience, flexibility, collaboration time, and opportunities for future improvement. In addition to this schedule, we're reviewing the balance and use of technology as well in our elementary classrooms, and we believe that our new strategic plan will provide the perfect opportunity to reflect, align, and make thoughtful adjustments that best serve our students and teachers. And he needs no introduction, but I am turning things over to Max Hoover.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us here today. I think it's important that we pause right here at the beginning and recognize that you guys as a board have a million different things you could be doing with your time, but the fact that you choose to come here and support this community, I think is very, very important, and I think you deserve recognition for that. We also enjoy this night. It's very fun for us to come and talk to you about the great things we are doing in our schools. Who is controlling the...
You are.
Thank you. Great. It's like I can riff for a little bit longer, but eventually I would like to get to our slides. There we go. So this is our amazing team. This picture represents a collective 213 years in education and 41 degrees, and most of that's Brian. So we are... We really do, I think Liz said it best, and one of the words I think that describes this team best is collaborative. So whatever it is that we need, I know there is someone on this team that we can go to, and we're really, really excited to get to talk to you guys tonight about the work that we are doing in our schools. And like I said, we all feel very, very grateful to be a part of this wonderful team, and we're excited tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Painter.
Well, you're going to hear several themes. First of all, thank you again. As Max said, we do appreciate you very much. You're going to hear several themes throughout the night before we get into our school-specific topics. One that you will hear first, WinTime, you also heard about last year. And there's not a lot of new things to share about this, but I do think it's worth at least, you know, for the viewers at home, to make sure that people know that WinTime is something that is happening consistently across our elementary schools. It is something that we use very much, and it's, I think, the third point on the left there. It is very much, it serves as a bridge between our multi-tiered systems of support, which previously was known as RTI, Response Instruction. It serves as a bridge between our MTSS work, our universal instruction, and the PLC structures that we have in our schools. And so WinTime stands for what I need, and it happens in all of our schools at each of our grade levels for ELA, typically for reading, and for math time. And it is very intentional work. It is... All decisions are made through our PLC structures, and so our teachers at a grade level work very collaboratively. And the goal is not to make a decision and have that student be in that setting, in that WinTime group for the entire year. It very much is an expectation that we are gathering on a regular basis to review data, talk about kids, and make decisions that are best, in the best interests of each child. And so I'm not going to go through all of these points here. You have the slides, and you can certainly ask questions. But I do think it's important just to say that this is something that's happening across our schools. We did have conversations last spring and the summer to fine-tune consistency and make sure that we had that consistency across our schools and across grade levels. And that has, I will say, there's been some pain points probably in some situations because it's new and it's different, and it does at times lock us in, if you will, at certain times of the day. But I think every one of our teachers who has said it's been challenging at times also will say, "But it's worth it because we see the evidence and we see what it's doing for our kids." And it provides that structure for us to be having, to provide targeted instruction based on what the students in our classroom at that time need. So I'll pass it off to, I can't remember, Alyssa, I believe.
Good evening. Do you want to talk first?
We're talking about PLC and learning labs. Again, kind of similar to WinTime, PLCs are continuing, so there's not a lot of new things listed. But PLCs are collaborative time for our grade-level teams to come together. It's student-centered, so our conversations are around student data, whether that be academic or SEL. In those conversations, our grade levels meet every week, but we do have set aside times for our counselors to join, our interventionists to join, and so we're constantly looking at and evaluating that student data. We're using shared language between all teams, things like supplemental and intensive intervention, so that we're always coming back to points to help our kids grow. Every decision that we make in those meetings is based on live evidence, so whether that's benchmarking or a common assessment that grade levels gave, and they choose to team-grade, it always comes back to what's best for students. So that time can be planning, but it's always centered around students and moving away from the silo mindset of each teacher's doing their own thing.
And this year, I think last year, every school did some sort of learning lab or double-plan within their PLC process based on what teams need. This year, it's more consistent across all five schools. We're all instituting some sort of learning labs, and our K1 learning labs and our 2 through 5 learning labs have different focuses this year, and we're all consistent with those focuses. The K1 learning labs have an emphasis on that shared reading, read alouds, narrative observations, to really build foundational skills with our youngest learners at the elementary level. The same focus in the early learning labs and 2 through 5 is that we want books in children's hands rather than them looking at text on iPads. There's a place for that, but during reading, we want physical books in kids' hands. The K1 learning labs have different strategies that they're looking at with our LitLink coaches, using Jennifer Saravella's strategies. Both learning labs are looking at our FastBridge resource, so that's the platform we use for our benchmarking, but using that data to help drive some interventions that teachers might use during that WinTime that Brian talked about earlier. And that's the same in K1 and 2, 5. And it might look different, like learning lab times, but those are the focus in all of our buildings. We're all leaning into our LitLink coaches for that work, and it's a great time for our PLC process, the collaboration between grade levels, and also time to get into classrooms and just see what their colleagues are doing. It's a really fun, good time focused on student learning and building adult learning while we do it.
All right. There we go. Hello again. I did the same thing last year, so next year I'll have it. So Jen and I, we're here to present on restorative practices. And so we are a restorative practice school district. We like to share with our staff that restorative practices is not something that we do, it's really who we are. So we don't do one thing that's like, "Oh, that's restorative." It's really embedded into everything that we do. And in order to make that happen, we have to ensure that our staff have the knowledge base. And so this year, we have our district-led PD for certified staff, but we've also found some intentional opportunities for our teaching assistants to have PD as well. We know that they work with our students during the most unstructured times, when things can get very fun and lively. And so we want to make sure that that learning is not just for our teachers, but also for our support staff as well. And then we also have our SEO coaches that we utilize. We do share them amongst different buildings, but we do reach out to them, whether it's coaching teachers, if they have an issue that's going on in a class, or if we are doing our walkthroughs and we see like, "Hey, this teacher may benefit from some additional support," then we reach out to our SEO coaches to help with that. With restorative practices, though, we're looking at fostering and building those relationships. So K5, every classroom has a dedicated SEO time. That's about 20 minutes per day. And of course, our teachers have the autonomy. If something is going on, like, please stop, take care of that, because we know that instruction cannot continue unless you take care of that specific issue. We make sure that there are opportunities for all staff to connect with students. I'm really honing in on that support staff so that they have opportunities to build relationships so that when things happen, they are able to go in and repair the harm and just really have intentional conversations with our students. And then in our buildings, so classroom meetings, we're having restorative conversations. And many times when we think of the word "restore," we're going back to the harm circle. We're having those conversations when harm has been done, but we're really pushing, again, this is something that we do all the time. So even our community-building circles, those are restorative in nature as well. Our counseling team, they schedule monthly guidance lessons. That's really our universal curriculum for our SEO, and so making sure that we are teaching those skills, and then if we need to follow up, we will. But all students have that experience, and they have that knowledge base, and that's all based on what students need. There's our counseling team, they work together to ensure that there's some type of continuity among all schools, but we do have the flexibility to give our students exactly what they need. And then going back to our TAs, our assistant principals in all buildings, they have regularly scheduled meetings with them.
Okay. Leah and I are going to talk to you about IDEA Lab. As you know, Kaiser's in their third year, and the rest of us are in our second year. It was wildly popular and successful last year. They started with a pre-survey about confidence and enjoyment around science, and then they did a post-year, gosh, my words are hard right now, an end-of-the-year assessment, same questions to gauge how much confidence or enjoyment students have. With that, I would like to say that they are an incredibly collaborative bunch. They meet for full days four to five times a year, and they really talk about what they are teaching and how it is impacting student growth. And so with that, they have, this year even, redistributed some of the units so that they can take on the work of the more hands-on units of science in order to free up some of that time for the classroom teachers. Wait, you're next, right?
Okay, so I will bring the mic all the way over here. I was trying to avoid that. So for programming, what we see in our elementary buildings is every elementary building hosts a STEAM night, where along with their in-class learning, students make real-life connections through those experiences they are having with their teachers as well as with their families at STEAM night. IDEA Lab, along with the MySci curriculum emphasizes innovation and technology and challenges students to create, to problem-solve, create and build something that is a design challenge, that an engineering challenge for students to do at the end of their learning. And so our kids are really enjoying that aspect of having that more hands-on instead of just the open the book, read, take notes, and take a test. They really are enjoying IDEA Lab because they go in, the teachers are enthusiastic because they collaborate so well with each other, and lessons are ready, set to go, and kids are doing some dynamic learning in IDEA Lab.
The 18 days that the classes spend in the IDEA Lab allow them to go into a much deeper dive into the content. It's very hands-on. They have all of those hands-on activities that Leah just mentioned, and the problem-solving and collaboration that occurs in the classroom is remarkable. It's very easy to walk by the IDEA Labs in any of our buildings and hear oohs and ahs or gleeful cheers when they have completed a project or made a robot move. The pictures, I'd be remiss because I've seen the middle one, the erosion activity, two, three times now, and the kids, it's a second-grade unit, and they get so excited that they've built or a model of land, and their house doesn't get washed away. So it's just really fun to see them be excited about learning. So, thank you.
So Adrian and I are going to talk a little bit about Amplified Decimal Math, which is our new math resource. We had several teachers pilot it last year, and this year we're in year one of our full adoption. This resource is grounded in inquiry and exploration, so it is common to hear students just kind of talking about math. And every day they start the lessons with a warm-up in which they are asked to share their noticing's and their wonderings. What do you notice, and what do you wonder? To kind of launch their thinking that day about what's to happen in math. The structure is the same. Most days where the students will have two activities. Generally, those two activities are with a partner or in a small group. Sometimes those activities are in whole group, but each activity is an opportunity for students to dig into that math, to look at the math not through the lens of direct instruction, but through that exploration. And so they come together, and at the end of a 10 or 15-minute period, there should be a key takeaway which the teachers will help those kids to come together to find. So there is the activity one where they do one something in the area of math, and they build on that in activity two. And again, at the end of each of those activities is a key takeaway. Following that activity two, they do a synthesis, kind of come-back-together, whole group, where they look at those activities together, and they determine as a class, what did we learn here? What crystallized for us as part of this lesson? And so this is where they find that key takeaway, where they summarize that learning that happened during that period. Following that, there is one more piece, and depending on the grade level typically, they will either have a center activity typically for our students in grades K1 and sometimes 2, or they'll do a show what you know, which is going to be independent, where the students then get to take the learning and show for themselves what they have learned, and the teacher can pull up those results and determine who really learned that, that skill that was being introduced and practiced during that lesson, and who didn't, so that the teacher can then go back in and work with those students if there are gaps or holes or if they're noticing that there was not the understanding that they had hoped to see. So that's the structure of the lesson, and again, most days it follows the same kind of pattern. But there are also opportunities for students to learn beyond that lesson, and so you can see on the screen what some of those things are. And basically, what these beyond-the-lessen opportunities provide are opportunities for students who maybe didn't get the learning completely the first time through. So there's some reteaching opportunities, there's some practice opportunities, but also for those students who have already mastered that work, there are some enrichment opportunities for them as well. Fluency is a big thing in elementary education in the way of math, so there are also opportunities within the modules to do some fluency practice, which teachers can also track as well. So this resource does provide opportunities for students to question and wonder and notice, but it also provides time and space for clarity around what was the true learning here that happened in the way of summary and key takeaways, and then also the beyond-the-lessen pieces. So Adrian will talk a little bit about how teachers are trained in this work.
Get over my initial shyness. Okay, so regarding the professional development, our CNI team took some intentional steps to provide teachers with opportunities to do some early learning. So teachers were given the opportunity to attend initial trainings in May, in August, as well as throughout the summer if they wanted to. And then they also had some required trainings, just because knowing that new piece of curricula required them to have a little bit more required attending days. And so teachers this last month, I can't believe it's already November, participated in three hours of Amplified Decimal Training with the Amplify and Miranda available to give them some other things that they could utilize as they are using that curriculum. And then as far as upcoming things that are happening, they'll have training tomorrow. So some of the teachers will go in the morning, if I'm not mistaken, and some will go in the afternoon. It's based on our schedule. And then there are also going to be opportunities throughout the year, well, second semester specifically, where the CNI team will offer sort of similar to the Literacy Link kind of thought process, where they can dig in specifically with things that the individual grade levels or individual buildings need. And so that is sort of how the professional development has been built for teachers using this new curriculum resource.
All right. It's me again, and this time we are going to talk about Kaiser. So this is just our initial slide. That's our mission. The bottom left is about 535 kids and all of our staff out there on the blacktop making a pink ribbon. So, and then there's our staff on the bottom right. That's opening day. There's like, I don't know, you can't really feel it from the picture, but there's no excitement like opening day. We tried to capture it, but that is us this year. And we are very excited to talk to you about just like three highlights through like the school improvement lens. And the first one we're going to talk about is adult learning. I think that we hold this true at Kaiser, that when adults learn more, kids learn more. And so this summer, well, actually last school year, we had the opportunity to go to a joint conference. So I threw it out there to the staff, and I traveled to Chicago this summer with seven teachers. And all seven wanted to go, take time away from their families and their lives over the summer to go to Chicago. We took the train. Robinson went too. And we went to a joint conference for elementary literacy and mathematics. And so we spent two and a half days at the conference, and you know, we're there together for keynotes, but then you pick your own sessions, and we're out and learning. We're sharing on a Google Doc, taking the best nuggets that we want to return back with. We're getting validated in our own practices because there's presenters at a national conference sharing things like, "We do that, we do that." One of our own presented, Leah Thomas, was up there sharing her amazing knowledge about writing and her passion. And so it was a great time for us to just be together and learn, validate, and also get excited about the upcoming school year. One of the things that we took back was how we do our faculty meetings and how we do learning together. One thing that I walked away from a session was just like celebrating our greatness. We don't always have to look outside. A piece of feedback that we received last year was our faculty meetings were a little tight. We did a lot of learning in a really tight schedule. We only have an hour together. So this year, based on somebody, a presenter that shared, we switched it up. So we use a Google Doc, and staff can sign up to share. So Leah Thomas has, she condensed, but she presented about writing to our staff. Our librarian has presented to our staff. Our social committee has presented. So I mean, we're booked up to like March, February of next, the upcoming year. But people are sharing out. Our gifted teacher is sharing out. So the amazing things that are happening that their team knows about, right, is getting to the larger audience. We're sharing our greatness. We're getting great ideas, and we're learning from each other during our faculty meetings so that we can do more with our kids and continue all the goodness at Kaiser.
Then, once a month, we also meet as a guiding coalition. So earlier we talked about PLCs. Those are led by a team leader. So every grade level, there's a guiding coalition leader, and then we also have a guiding coalition leader for our specials areas and intervention and SEL. So this is a time where we're building capacity within our teachers to be leaders because we don't run those PLCs. It's teacher-led, like it's them creating the agendas and working with their teams. So it's just taking that time to talk about what a collaborative team looks like and sounds like, and how they can be leaders in that setting so that they're doing the very best for the kids. Our next area is under belonging. So we have a belonging committee, which is comprised of teachers, one of our counselors. We're a part of it as well. We actually just met today. But our belonging committee looks for ways for people to feel included and welcomed at Kaiser. And so that can look a variety of ways. On the last slide, there was a picture of our giant pink ribbon supporting one of our teachers that's battling breast cancer. That came from Belonging Committee. Our Belonging Committee met today to start talking about Black History Month and how our students are going to be seen during that month, looking for leadership opportunities for kids. They've decided our theme days for the year. Another big thing that Belonging Committee is responsible for right under that is family groups. So this is every staff member in the building, both certified and non-certified, have a family group that's comprised of kids from K through 5, really just to kind of bring that sense of belonging and community beyond just the kids in your grade level. We call them our PRIDE groups because we're Kaiser PRIDE. It stands for positive, respectful, inclusive, dependable, equitable, and safe. And every month, we do a lesson around one of those words. So we've done positive, we've done respectful, we'll be moving to inclusive. And that's also an opportunity for our teachers to be leaders. They create the lessons for the whole school to use, and then also a really great opportunity for our 5th graders because they really take on getting our kindergartners, bringing them to family groups, walking them
take on getting our kindergartners, bringing them to family groups, walking them back, checking in on them. So it's just a great opportunity to build community.
Yes, our fifth graders, definitely, they pick up the younger kids, they drop them off. They also, the icebreaker that all of our pride family groups do, the fifth grade does that in their class before we meet, we typically have met on Fridays, but leading up to that, they'll do the icebreaker in their classroom and then they help lead it out when we get together. So a lot of leadership there. Another thing that we had heard last school year was more opportunities for our fifth grade. So this year, we put out a Google form, very short, to all fifth graders, asking them what their interests are. And we were able to kind of narrow it down, and every fifth grader that wanted to participate in a leadership opportunity is doing so. Our Spirit Week is a group, I have a student advisory group that's very upset about sodium levels and hot sauce. So we're working through that with Chartwell's, it was taken away because it's sodium level restrictions. Soccer nets are another hot topic with our fifth grade student advisory group. We have a group of very passionate fifth graders about composting. So they let out how to compost at Kaiser during lunches, so they're teaching other kids. So you get the idea of our fifth grade leadership group, they're very passionate, they're very excited, and they are so incredibly capable of being leaders. And so really excited about the work we're doing with our fifth graders, and I'm sure when they head to North next year, Dana and the team will reap the benefits of their leadership for sure. The last thing that Daniel and I wanted to talk about was our climate and culture work, and I'm going to pass it back to him.
One of the things that we heard at the end of the year was that teachers wanted more, you know, support and understanding of how to address bias and how to have those tough conversations in their classrooms. And one thing that research really supports is that it's hard to address it if you haven't done that internal work yourself. And so this year, with our staff, in the afternoons on professional development days, we're working on identity work and understanding their identity and how that contributes to their views of the world, thinking about their own privileges, their own biases, so that we can kind of tackle that first, because it's not just an overnight thing to be able to address some of the larger problems in society, but starting with that internal work is where we're going to begin this year.
We also are really leaning into our school-wide celebrations to improve our climate and culture. And so a few things that our belonging group and also the larger just group at Kaiser has come up with is our VIP Fridays, which is something we started last year. It's kind of a nod to something we did years ago, where any Kaiser kid can have a very important person to them come in. This year, we have two, one in first semester and one in second semester, and we also switched it up where we did a later time. Last year, we had VIP Fridays and they were both in the morning, and something that our staff considered was that not every very important person can come in the morning. So we had one in the afternoon, and the feedback was that it was much smoother than either of the two from last year, so we're getting better and better. And so that's just one way, we're inviting our very important people in and celebrating all the amazing things happening at Kaiser. We have our Veterans Day Assembly, that's always a big hit at Kaiser, we have a second and fourth grade concert, and we have lots of staff celebrations this school year. And that's partly because of our amazing social committee, which we meet with quite often to ensure that we're celebrating all of our staff, not just our certified staff. We've had special days where we're celebrating, we've had a larger social media impact to really highlight and celebrate every staff member. We do a treat trolley with our social committee, we've had special lunches for all of our staff. And outside of school, we're getting together because we actually really like each other and want to spend even more time, and hopefully that is transferring over to the positive climate where Kaiser kids feel it and our community feels it too. So there's lots of really great things happening at Kaiser, and I really enjoyed having time to write about it for you.
Okay. We are excited to tell you about the things that we're doing at North Glendale. Just on this slide alone, I always say that Glendale, the city of Glendale, has the most home, like small-town feel of any place I've been in, in my career. And it is really fun to like see the front yard just filled with kids reading or a class doing a lesson on the front lawn on those nice days. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that, but I just wanted to highlight Ms. Driscoll and her class, who used some time outside to do some activities. All right, next slide. Okay, that is our mission. We did, we spent last year reworking our mission with the staff and the students. And so our mission is at North Glendale, we create a community of kindness and belonging that encourages growth and a love for learning. After we do the process with the district strategic plan, our plan at North Glendale is to start our vision work. So I anticipate that happening next year, but we have a good start, and we're starting to make sure that we look through this lens as we make decisions around kids and around each other. So the first one, and I'm going to, we're going to pivot just a little bit because of the microphone, because we weren't thinking logistically. So I'm going to go ahead and cover connection and belonging, and then PLCs, and then Leah will come back to climate and culture. So connection and belonging, this is both for kids and adults. On that first slide, for us, you saw Olaf dancing, it was really hard to get a clear shot of him. But we are on the Tillman musical train, and so this is our second year to do a school musical, and that was the assembly where it was announced, it's a big deal. Last year, I think we had around 80 students participate, and this year, they're feeling brave enough to get it up just over 100. And so they just finished auditions and kids got their roles, and so they're getting ready to start rehearsals, it's really fun. I highly recommend coming to one of the shows. Fix-it crew, I really want to highlight as well. Last year, some third graders approached our Idea Lab teacher, Mr. Dressel, and said, or asked, like, how do things work? We want to find out, you know, could we, could you help us take apart something and like put it back together, sort of thing? And he was like, sure, I have 15 minutes here and there, like we can meet. It became so wildly popular that, I mean, they fixed everything from my robot vacuum, a couple of Keurigs, two microwaves, a smoker, a TV. They are so jazzed about it. And so this year so far, they have fixed a bike, it had handlebar problems and brake problems and chain problems. They fixed it up and it was able to be presented to a student who learned how to ride a bike during bike rodeo this year. So not only are they loving what they're learning, but they are also loving to give back, which I think is remarkable. Our KSOC group, I would put them against anyone, it's led by Mrs. Holt, Mrs. Johnson, and Mr. Trebeu, and they have really thought intentionally about how we can help all of our staff feel connected. They have started this year a newsletter, a quarterly newsletter, to kind of keep everybody informed of what happens at K-Talk, but also workshops or things that they can go to to visit to learn more about the efforts. And I really appreciate how much they think about the entire staff, so that we keep in mind that there's allyship within this work. And so they are wonderful to work with. Another highlight that I want to mention is our, 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 interactive and diverse bulletin boards. We have a teaching assistant who is very passionate about this work and is helping us not only show people who we are as a staff and as a student population, but also teaching them along the way. And so when I mean interactive bulletin boards, there will be questions or there will be an opportunity for students to hypothesize or puts, you know, use a post-it to add to the bulletin board while they're learning. And they're all over the building, and so if you ever are in North Glendale, please make sure that you go upstairs too, because they really are remarkable, and she deserves every bit of the credit for her work, but also the team's work that helps her out. Okay, let's move over to PLCs. There's a couple different ways at North Glendale that we can work collaboratively and learn from one another. The first one is our student support team. We meet weekly to problem-solve around students both academically and behaviorally. It's a large team of people everywhere, everywhere from school psych, SSD, counselors, admin, you name it. And we either meet as a team and talk about what we're seeing with kids, or we have teachers who sign up to come and talk specifically about a child. And so with that, with those conversations, we're learning from each other and supporting our students. We are also doing the Clarity for Learning book study as a staff. Leah and I present a chapter with our guiding coalition, and then we've had one opportunity so far for our guiding coalition to then present to our staff, and it went really well, so we're going to continue that work. They get to make it their own after hearing how we present it, which allows for more buy-in. And so, yeah, we're just, we're doing a lot of learning from each other and growing together. We're excited for that.
All right, so when we're thinking about climate and culture, it's important, is this still on? Okay. It's important because it builds trust, which our teachers need when they are working together in PLCs and in guiding coalition. But it also allows us to have some fun in the building with all the academic and behavior things that we're doing. And so one of the things that we do is NG Day of Play. So there's a global day of play in the spring, and so North Glendale has one in the fall. And Chartwell jumped in and they're like, we have our food truck, and so everybody that day is eating hot dogs or cheeseburgers and tater tots and just having a great time, not just playing with each other, but it also now includes all of the staff, including our cafeteria staff. Another thing that we started this year is the Superstar Day at the beginning of the year, and that was an opportunity for us to come together to learn school-wide expectations. And so, yes, it's a lot of planning and it does take up a whole day, but there's some great things that come out of it. So for instance, our Idea Lab teacher and one of our reading specialists were in charge of bathroom expectations. And so now the saying at the school is, it's a potty, not a party, when we're talking about what we're expecting kids to do when they are about our, when they're going about our building. And so that was a fun day. At the end of it, everybody signed a big banner, a North Glendale banner, that says we are superstars. And another thing we have is the NGTV news, and actually, again, we're pulling in not just teachers doing all this with students, we actually have our building sub, who is an Emmy award-winning producer. Yes, she belongs to North Glendale, we're proud of her, but she is handling our NGTV news. And so, but the news is still student-driven. There, one of our recent broadcasts, there's a whole segment that is just in Spanish, and our students who are, who have Spanish as their first language led that particular segment on that broadcast. And then we have staff celebrations, and I like what Alyssa said about not just celebrating our certified staff, but celebrating all our staff. So when we get back to school on Wednesday, we're going to be celebrating one of our TAs who's getting married later on this month. And everybody jumped right in on board as excited about celebrating her upcoming nuptials as we were for celebrating one of our kindergarten teachers who just recently had her first baby. And so I will say that as a new member of the North Glendale family, that this atmosphere, this sense of belonging, this coming together, and not just working together, but really celebrating together, has really warmed my heart, and I'm loving every minute of it. Jen pushed a button for me this time, so I didn't have to worry about it. All right, so Robinson Elementary, there are just a few pictures up here just to celebrate who we are. There may be a few familiar faces that are up there, Dr. Map. And so really just, I wanted to just highlight from just our youngest learners in pre-K up to our fifth graders, just our school community. The picture in the top right is from the Green Tree Parade, and as far as student and family participation in the parade, I'm almost certain that we had the largest group. So just wanted to throw that out there. I know other buildings win in some areas, but we definitely win in the Green Tree Parade. But it really just shows just how much our community, you know, we're not able to do all the things, but the things that we do, we do it very well. And when you go back, I just wanted to point out Cam's face on the tricycle there, that's from our bike rodeo. Cam is a student at Robinson, and so he looked like he's pushing through, like he's really pushing through that and was able to experience success. But, you know, again, we celebrate, whether it's academic, social, things that are going on within a community, that is just who Robinson is. And so at Robinson this year, our theme is empowered by positivity, inspired by possibilities. And so we are leading with joy, learning with purpose, and succeeding together. And so we're just going to highlight a few other things that we have done. And so we'll start with just our staff and climate culture. This is Jen and I's second year together, and coming in, we knew that we had to do some work with just staff belonging in itself. And so we're continuing that work. For our book study, we're using the energy bus on John Gordon. And so we build in opportunities just throughout, whether it's the beginning of the year for opening day or different staff meetings, and then we tie it into our TA meetings as well. And so we're just really looking at like the positive and seeing things from a different light. And yes, there's so many things that can happen, but what can we control, and let's focus on that. A new initiative this year, as well as our staff families, and so instead of having our students in a family, we have our staff in a family. And so that's all staff in the building, certified support staff. And then throughout the year, we have different competitions or different activities. And so we just finished up with our pumpkin decorating contest, and it's very easy for staff to get together in their team groups, so by grade level. But when you're having to come together with people that you don't interact with, often it takes some intentional planning behind that. And so, yes, there are some lovely submissions for our pumpkin decorating contest. And I'll have Jen share more about what we are doing as a staff. You have great notes over there.
I really like staying behind the scenes, so we have really been intentional and our staff has really come together to be intentional about the different opportunities that we are forming together this year. We have staff members that have started like a walking club, they get to school at 7:30 in the morning and they all go walk together. It's starting to be cooler out, so now that we see them, the paths through the building. If you've never been in Robinson, we have lots of neat little nooks and crannies that you can go through. They have planned a monthly outing, and it spells Robinson, so in September, they went to Rosalita's, and then they went to Ernesto's, and so they...
They'll sell you the B.
Four hands, you can go from there. So they have been planning outings that spell out Robinson. We had our pumpkin carving contest, I think it was rigged. And we had a costume contest as well for our teams that we had actually, it was on Facebook and had the community vote on. But there are just a lot of opportunities for everyone to get involved, because we want to make sure that everyone in our building is feeling included.
And so we are continuing those initiatives with our student belonging as well. We have multiple opportunities just to really celebrate our students, starting with our new to Robinson group, and that's led by our counselors. So any student... So, any student of 1st through 5th grade, they meet with our counseling team. They meet about once per month. And that's really just a time for, one, our new students to interact with each other, but also just a chance for our counseling team to check in with students to see how things are going. When we, I read our Panorama survey feedback last year, one of the things that came out of it was, like, "I don't know if my student has a relationship with the principal." And I really took that to heart. Now, this was a student that may not typically come in the principal's office, but we're like, you know, we need to make sure that all students have an opportunity to connect. And so, this year, we have a principal's lunch bunch. It was a really great idea in July, when we were talking about it. And students love it. They're like, "When are we meeting with you?" But it's definitely a lot on the 2nd and 4th Fridays. But that is an opportunity where we are meeting with every single student at Robinson, kindergarten through 5th grade, just to talk about really anything. So, we've gotten ideas about how to make the school better. One week, I also received "All of the 4th Grade Tea," as they called it. So, it was, it was great for me, but, you know. But again, it's, you know, just sitting there and some of the students, you're like, "I don't know if I've ever heard you say a word." But to see them come, you know, just come out of their shells in that moment, it's just a really great experience. So, we're pushing through. It is a great thing to do, but yes, it can be difficult sometimes. And then also celebrating our students' cultures. We just finished, we wrapped up our Hispanic Heritage Celebration. This year, we have two students that were new to Robinson, but they're also Spanish-speaking. And so, we included them on our announcements every day. They helped lead the announcements, but they also taught students words in Spanish. And these were students, their parents would say, "I don't think they're going to speak." And I'm like, "You must not really know your child," because they don't have a problem at all. But that's just, you know, one of the ways that we are involving students. And then, you know, just finding those opportunities. We have another student on Friday. She had a hard time just coming in the building this year. And so, it's like, "Please come help me with the announcements." Well, she took that as, "Every Friday, I'm going to help you," and that's exactly what we're doing.
So, for adult learning this year, we have several different things in place. So, we have our Ed+ consultant. And last year, we weren't exactly sure how to best use our Ed+ consultant. And so, this year, we were a lot more strategic in planning with how we work with her. So, she is coming in cycles, where she's coming for a few weeks in a row to visit our PLC and provide feedback. And then, we were able to put those things into practice and then she comes back to kind of check in. And so, that's been really helpful for Lakendra and I and for our teams to kind of hear from an outside perspective. We are so lucky that we have Katie Witt, our literacy coach at Robinson. And working with her in conjunction with the link has been really helpful. Alyssa talked about Learning Labs earlier. And so, we just have a lot of strong pieces in place to help support our teachers. We also went to the NCTE/NTM Joint Conference this year. And we built in some time for our teachers that went to the conference this year. They came back in our opening week. They were able to present to our staff. They got to pick some different sessions that they went to. And so, it was really nice to build our teachers up to be the leaders within our staff. And we often tap into our SEL coach in addition to Katie Witt. And we have been super thankful and lucky to have Miranda Dix this year with the implementation of our new math program. She has been in our building several different times. Teams that are reaching out to her, asking for her to come model or to come watch and provide feedback. She's actually coming again on Wednesday, I believe, to work with one of our teams. So, it's really nice that there are a lot of people that we have in place to help support our staff.
How are we doing on time? We're okay? Okay, good. Motion to go in reverse alphabetical order next year. These are pictures of Tillman and folks involved at Tillman. That's our, that T you see there is our brand-new cafeteria floor this year. And that is our group of 5th graders that we had for our 5th grade leadership lock-in. And you can see, we, I don't know, we just have, every school would say, "They have the best kids and best teachers and best community." But, you know, so we're going to say the same thing. We really do feel, Brian and I feel very blessed to get to work with the staff and kids and families that we get to work with every day at Tillman. It's a really, really fun place to be. We're going to start by talking about adult learning. And the reason I want to start there, and we wanted to start there, is Brian and I recognize that that is the opportunity that we have to make the biggest difference on student learning. If we can help shape adult mindsets and adult ideas, those things will impact what happens in the classrooms. There are several pieces of adult learning we have in place this year that we wanted to talk to you about. What we also know is, time is not infinite, right? So, we have to be, we have to be creative and we have to be intentional with the time that we do have. So, one of the things we have happening this year at Tillman is an action research project. Each of our teams is taking on an action research project this year. They got to self-select an area of focus that they thought might improve student outcomes. And they're getting to study and try things on that all year. We've led, like, helped them to see it as, if you're stuck as a PLC and you don't know what to have a discussion about this week, or you don't necessarily have some new thing, or you don't want to just give a common formative assessment for the sake of having something to talk about, this action research project is another thing that you can sort of have in your back pocket. So, we have teams studying things that include executive functioning, better data tracking and goal-setting with kids, outdoor learning and cross-curricular planning. So, when teachers, when our teachers are not in a learning lab with the link, they then go on a rotation of learning labs with Brian and me. And we focus on that action research and helping to keep pushing them through that. And then, at the end of the year, one of our last faculty meetings of the year, every team will present their work to the rest of the staff, hoping, the idea, our idea is that maybe some of those things will now sort of take root and become things that exist beyond just those teams. Another thing that we study or are studying this year is we're using our faculty meeting time to talk about brain-based learning, right? And so, while we know there is a lot of conversation about recess and movement and activity, so we had teachers study that this summer. What does the research tell us students need as far as movement? And it was a really, really great study of about nine teachers who did, and Brian and me, who did an online module with a company and did some work. And then came back together this summer to say, "How do we now, how do we now put this out to the staff? What does the staff need to know? Yes, we know kids need to move, but how frequently do they need to move to really be effective? Or what does that movement need to look like to make sure that they are doing the best learning possible in their classroom? It's not just go outside and play at recess. That's not the answer, right? The answer is, how do you have an intentional movement that then sets them up to be successful on the next subject or time that they are going to have in their class? When are the times throughout the day that it makes sense to have movement to get the highest leverage? And so, when we talked about that with our staff and did some work in August, we then got to the idea that this needs, we need to move beyond just how does movement impact the brain? But there are lots of other pieces of how we learn that is important for us to know as well. So, we've had sessions around cognitive load and working memory. And just again, what does the brain tell us matters? And what does, what does research tell us the brain needs to have to be its most successful? The other thing is, we have a tech cadre, cadre, cadre. We have a tech group. We have a tech group, a vertical tech group that is studying with an Apple facilitator. And the idea there is, how do we make more active use of technology, right? We all know, you know, everyone's read The Anxious Generation at this point. We all recognize that just putting an iPad in front of a child is not how you use it actively in a classroom. That does you no good, right? At that point, it's a glorified book or a glorified worksheet. That's not what we want. That's not the point of that technology. So, we have facilitator who comes and shows us some really active and engaging things we can do with that technology to get our students bought in, but also, more importantly, to help impact learning, right? Beyond just a babysitter, right? Beyond just using it as independent iPad time, right? Like, how can we use our iPads to be more effective? The bottom line of all this adult learning, though, is Brian and I hope, with all of this learning we do with our adults, that we are modeling the teaching that we hope to see in our classrooms at Tillman. So, teaching that is authentic, active, applicable, and abiding.
I was worried that our energy and enthusiasm and excitement wouldn't come across, but no problem. No problem. We're good. And that is, that is, we are incredibly fortunate, I think, to work together, but also to work with a fantastic staff at Tillman. We have terrific kids, of course, and we do, we have wonderful families. And I'm going to start there because the relationships that we have are the foundation of the culture and climate of belonging. And I'm going to extend it a little bit further than that, I think. We truly believe that we want our families to be a part of what we're doing, whether they are physically in the building or we are engaging with them in other ways. We want them to know that they belong and this school is theirs as well. But we also want that for our kids and for our staff members. We think that everybody needs to not only feel like they belong, but they need to know that they're valued and that they matter. And those are things that are really important to us, that we try to just model on a day-to-day basis. We have kids across our entire school who have relationships with so many adults. I'm sure that there are some that we are slipping through the cracks on a little, on a little bit. But, I mean, our mornings are, I mean, we have to like go to class, go to class. Well, I still have to go see so-and-so and so-and-so and so-and-so because they love these teachers. And I think that has been a byproduct of the PLC work and the win time and the flexible groupings that we have because I think our kids know not just the teachers that they are assigned to for homeroom, but for the entire grade level. And as they move through the system, there are so many adults that know them and know them well and have those relationships. And then throw in clubs that we have, though, in our fantastic affinity groups. And we have people all over the building that our kids can rely on, who know them and they can go to if they need anything. And so, that is something that we're very proud of and something that I think all of us in all of our schools can say. Shared leadership is an important part of what we believe in as well. We want our adults in our school, and for that matter, I will say, our families, to know that they are part of our leadership team and that they, again, that they value, that they are valued and they matter. And that is something that we model on a day-to-day basis. We have so many committees of teachers that we go to and we ask their opinions on things. And if they come to us and we're like, "Okay, well, how can we make this happen?" I think we would like, in all circumstances, to have our default be, "Yes, let's figure it out," as opposed to "No." Because there are so many teachers in our district, in our school, that have great ideas and know their kids and know how, I think, I truly believe, know how to meet the needs of kids. And so, if we can sometimes support them, but sometimes just get out of their way, they're going to, they're going to show us a path. And I think that's really exciting. Shared leadership does not just extend to the adults, though. Our 3rd through 5th graders are the leaders. They are the three oldest grades in our 6th grade schools. And so, I, we think it's really important that we start developing those leadership skills in our 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders. And I will say, our 5th grade, in my, in my 327 years of experience, I've learned that as goes the 5th grade, so goes the school. And so, we put intentional effort into our 5th graders every year. Our 5th grade team of teachers are fantastic of developing the kids, having class, grade-level meetings. They do work with, with all the kids around leadership squads. We do have our overnight lock-in retreat in August, where we really teach into leadership skills and help them understand that this is something, this is a big deal being a 5th grader in an elementary school. And it comes with a certain amount of responsibility as well. And so, that's an exciting thing for us. We have so many fantastic things that I, that I hope and I truly believe are helping kids understand that they, that they belong, they value, and that they matter.
And then we'll close with family engagement and communication. We have a lot of events during the school day. And again, as Brian said, our goal is to bring families into those events, you know. And so, we had 4th Fridays last year, and those were always in the morning. And again, as Alyssa shared in talking about feedback she got at Kaiser, we got similar feedback at Tillman, that that leads to inequities because there are some families that just cannot participate in a morning activity. So, we worked and reworked the schedule so that some of those are now in the morning and some are in the afternoon. What we also did is, we recognized that at Tillman, one of the things I personally just feel most connected to and value the most about Tillman Elementary is we have a group of dedicated teachers who run fantastic assemblies. Like, they are, they are a blast. They're a hot ticket. You need to get there, right? And so, what we realized is, those don't, we don't need to make those two separate things. Why are we having a 4th Friday and then again later having an assembly two weeks, you know, two weeks after that? So, we've connected those two events. So, that 4th Friday happens, parents go read or do math with their kids. And then the idea is, anybody in the building is invited to come down and now attend the assembly. And so, we had our first one of those recently. And I'm not sure what the fire code is in our cafeteria, but we tiptoed very closely up to the line, which was awesome, that parents came to 4th Friday and decided to stay. And so, we're excited to see how that works. We have our, when we have our first afternoon one, to see if, you know, how that impacts the attendance. But again, the idea, hopefully, we will see some new and different families that maybe aren't able to attend in the morning. We're also being very intentional about our communication. So, that means any communication that we are sending out is our school newsletter or teachers sending their individual newsletters. A lot of feedback we got is, people like the information, but they're not necessarily sure how to talk to their kids about what is in the newsletter. So, we've really tried to shift our thinking and really helped to guide parents to, "Don't just ask your kid about how their day was. Here is exactly what they did in English class, and here's a question that you could ask them to discuss that." So, just trying to make sure that families can feel like they are really involved in the education, which also brings us to Schoology as our last point on this. We've made a huge push to get every family at Tillman involved and active on Schoology because it does, it provides them another layer that allows them to not only get streamlined communication, but also really kind of see what is happening in class, right? It's one thing to be told, "This is, this is, you know, this is how math is being taught right now" versus, "Here is an example of your child's math work," so you can see exactly what they are doing and what that looks like and know kind of how to support them next. So, that's Tillman.
So, now, we will talk a little bit about Westchester. We're really proud of Westchester. We're really proud of our community and how we do come together as a community in lots of different ways. There's our beautiful staff on opening day. It was really great. Our tech specialist, Carlos Glenn, he took his drone out and had us stand there for a while. And it was, it was really great for us to come together for that photo. The picture on the right of the school was taken by our school librarian. I don't know, how long ago was that? A while ago. So, but it's a beautiful photo of our school. And this really does capture, capture the feel of our school. It's warm. It's inviting. And that's what we have every day when we get to walk into Westchester. I love being there. This is year two for me and year two for us as an admin team, and we're just loving every minute of it. So, we'll give you a little look into Westchester now. All right, so for us, we focused our portion of the presentation on things that are new at Westchester this year. And Adrienne and I realized last year that we needed to help our teachers to build their leadership capacity. And so, we really focused on that over the summer as we thought about what we wanted this school year to hold for our staff. And so, we created opportunities for shared leadership. The first of which is our Guiding Coalition cohorts. So, every teacher, whether they're a classroom teacher, special area teacher, librarian, interventionist counselor, everyone will have a full quarter where they serve on the Guiding Coalition, where they're bringing leadership to their particular area. We saw value in this because it's easy for people to sit back and let others lead, and it's harder to be the leader. And so, what we're doing through these Guiding Coalition cohorts is we're allowing everyone to get the opportunity to experience leadership. And what that looks like is, they get to participate in different things. First quarter, that cohort got to look with us at the strategic plan for Westchester. They got to look at our school improvement plan and help us to think together around, you know, what do we want to work on this year? What are the things that we need to be focusing our attention on? This second quarter cohort, one of the things that we're, that we had them do last week when we met was to look with us at the instructional minutes and to talk about the building schedule. It's something that we're paying attention to. Liz talked about that at the beginning. And so, that particular cohort got to weigh in on that and to have conversations that are impacting the work that we will do moving forward at the district level. So, bringing these cohorts together, again, provides opportunities for teachers to share their leadership. Some like it. Others are like, "I'm not sure how I feel about this leadership thing." But everybody now, as a leader for their team during their quarter, will sit in that PLC and they will be the facilitator of that meeting. They will make sure that those agendas are tight and ready to go. And they will make sure that the work of that learning group moves forward. And so, it really is a great opportunity for us to help our teachers grow. Adrienne's going to talk a little bit about shared leadership through the lens of our staff committees, which we're really excited about.
So, something that is new at Westchester is staff committees. And we have scheduled them to happen on the other opposite month. So, we have staff meetings. So, we have staff, staff meetings, and so, the next meeting would be a committee meeting. So, we have four committees. The We Social Committee, which is all things to do with adults and getting together outside of the building and doing adult-like activities. The other committee we have is the We Family and Engagement. And one of the things that has been shared prior to my even joining Westchester is that we used to have family groups. And so, one of the biggest things that we are, wait a minute, I'm talking about the wrong one. We Social, sorry. We School Culture, that's the one. Family Groups. And so, one of the things that we're trying to get off and going this year is actual family groups where all staff will have a group and we will do a shared activity. I know one of the things we're going to try to do in the second semester is something called Aces Day, which is basically like a all-everybody-move day. And so, we'll get together outside and do some type of dancing and things like that. So, that's one of the things that we're trying to get off and going in our school culture. For We Family and Engagement, it really was taking stock in some of the things that we do at Westchester and making sure that we communicate that information out to families. And we learned that, one of the things is that families are often getting that weekly newsletter from Julie, but also like layering that information into the classroom teacher's newsletter is another way to sort of remind families what we're doing in our building. The next one that I'll talk about is We Outdoors, and that's pretty big because we do have the We Woods. And we're definitely trying to get it back to its glory days where we had fifth graders come around and do sort of the obstacle courses in there. We're not quite there yet because of all of the construction. So, we've, one of our committee members, Jenny Ono, has taken the lead on trying to get the, the We Woods back to its glory. And so, that's a picture of some of the instances where families have volunteered their time to come out and sort of clean and de-weed and make it look nice so that we can get out there. Another thing that we've also got in there is our story walk, and so, you can kind of see the picture there, where there was a family who donated the, the board and all of that and put it in. And then, one of our committee members goes around week, monthly, and will change the story walk. And so, that's just another opportunity for kids to get out during, throughout the day, as well as for families on the weekends and after school to come around and explore our woods. And then, finally, we have, did I do them all? I do School Culture. Yeah, I did School Culture, sorry. There's four of them, got to make sure. We Social, Adults, We Family and Engagement, We Outdoors, and then School Culture. Yeah, there you go, got them all.
All right. Another area of focus for us that came out of our climate survey was the need to do some work around trust. And so, we brought in last year Paya Sample, who does all kinds of wonderful things to help communities of adults work together, collaborate, and to develop trust. So, we contracted with her, and she started her work with us again this year in August. And she spent two hours with us, helping us to begin thinking about trust and how trust impacts our work with one another. Because we all know that if we don't have trust in our teams, it's really hard to move forward. It's really hard to share kids during wind time if I don't trust you as my colleague with my students. It's really hard to navigate relationships in a school, relationships where we have to work together collaboratively if we don't trust each other, whether it's on a grade level team or outside of the grade level. So, we have been really intentional about our work around trust. And so, even after that first August meeting, you would hear people talk a little bit about trust and say things like, yeah, we're, we're developing our trust, is, I can do this now because I have more trust. And so, it really did catch fire with some people. We are also using this theme of trust-based teams and working on trust within our school environment, within our guiding coalition. So, since everyone is going through the guiding coalition during one quarter, we decided that it would be really beneficial and helpful for us to do a book study around trust. And so, each quarter, Adrienne and I are going to read the same book every quarter, which is really wonderful. We're getting better. Second quarter is already going better than the first. But the title of our book is The Thin Book of Trust, and it truly is a thin book. It is an easy, easy read, and it focuses on four different aspects of trust, which, those four aspects are care, sincerity, reliability, and competence. And so, when we have those conversations, we often talk about, you know, what is your, what are your areas where you are strongest in the area of trust? Is it care? Is it sincerity? Is it something else? And where do you have room to grow and room to work? And so, it will take the full year, right, for everyone to get through this work with us, but it has been really beneficial. And when we sit with the teams, with the guiding coalition, and we read through these pages and we discuss those pages, we have seen teachers really become vulnerable in those spaces, sharing their experiences and opening themselves up to a group that maybe they're not that comfortable with yet. Our guiding coalition cohorts are made up of one teacher or maybe two from each team. And so, when you come together for this meeting, you know, every couple of weeks, you are with people that you don't work with every single day in your spaces. And so, to be vulnerable, to allow yourself to be open about what you're experiencing through the lens of trust has been a lot. So, Paya came in August. She will come and do another full two-hour session with us in February. But each guiding coalition will also get one hour with her during our final guiding coalition meeting of the quarter. So, we've done that with the quarter one group. And so, we're really excited about the intentional time that we've built in to this work, and it is already showing itself in what we are experiencing in our PLCs with our guiding coalition meeting, members leading our work around trust.
So, something else that's new is the participation amount of teachers in the restorative practices. PD that is offered through Dr. Map and his team. Last year, we had a group of classroom teachers go, plus myself, Julie, and our counselors. And I believe that the reason that we have so many going this year is not because of me and Julie or our counselors, it's actually because of the classroom teachers talking to each other and really sharing their positive experience and the information that they gained out of their professional development. And therefore, this year, we have 15 staff members, all from different parts of our building, whether it is on the specials team to individual grade levels. Some, some of the grade levels will have most of their teachers that have attended or will attend that restorative practice PD. And so, that is something that we are really, really proud to share and in the sense of sort of that Lakendra talked about, it is not something you do on a one-off, it is something who we are. So, we are really proud of our team for doing that.
And this year, more than last year, at least maybe I don't remember last year, it's kind of a blur, but we've, we've had a lot of teachers ask us to lead restorative circles with them, to join with them, to work through something challenging with their class. And it's been really great to partner with teachers in that work as we help students really navigate hard things. And so, people are truly leaning into this work, and I can't wait to see where we are after these additional 15 staff members have gone through this training. I think it will be really, really beneficial for our school community and how we navigate things that come up amongst ourselves as adults and amongst the students in our classrooms. So, we're really excited about our restorative practices work and what's yet to come for us. So, that is the end of the elementary presentation. We would like to thank you so much for giving us the opportunity, the venue, the time, the space to share with you a little bit about what we're doing as a full elementary admin team, but also to highlight some of the things that we're doing in each of our individual buildings. So, thank you very much for the time, we enjoyed it.
Thank you, this was great. I do want to go around and just see if people have comments, okay? Lisa?
Yeah, thanks. Well, as the newest member of the board, this is the first of these types of meetings that I've been to, so definitely understand why Judy commented this is one of her favorite meetings. So, thanks so much for all your presentations and sharing all the energy and excitement and the great work that you all are doing. My first question is really around the team environment. Dr. Granow, when you kind of introduced the team, you shared that this team seems to be working together, sharing ideas, sharing best practices, that type of thing. I'm curious what the forum is that you all have, or kind of what are the opportunities that you have to partner together, to share ideas? Do you have time carved out for that, or how do you, how do you do that?
We do. We have a PK through five meeting once a month, and we also have a senior leadership team meeting as well, where our district and building leaders get together. And then, at the PK five meeting, this group gets together as well. We have a shared agenda, so any topics that they would like to discuss or items that come up, we share that. And we start with celebrations, team building, restorative practice as well, and then talk about celebrations and challenges that are happening in the building also. So, lots of time to really collaborate. We also text quite a bit to share ideas also. And then, I know this group also, whenever items come up, they are so collaborative in working together and sharing those ideas that they're having success with, that they communicate quite a bit.
Yeah, that's wonderful. I'm sure it's nice to have someone to reach out to share ideas or maybe commiserate with on things that you're working through. Another thing that I'm curious about is, with five different schools, I know there's an interest in providing consistency across the schools, and that you all have been working on things like schedules and other topics to make sure that our students across the district really feel like they have, and the families across the district feel like they have some degree of kind of consistency or continuity. But I also recognize that for each of our schools, there's clearly a different culture, different set of needs for our families and for our students. How do you balance that? I don't know, it is kind of for anybody who might be interested in jumping in. How do you balance that need to provide a degree of consistency with the desire and interest in really honoring the unique cultures and needs of the different students?
Yeah, you can start, and then please jump in and share as well. That common schedule across the buildings has really helped, and a lot of what drives that is the instruction around our math, ELA, our SEL curriculum, social studies, science, and also some of our special schedules as well. So, there's a concrete connection right there, a foundation with the building schedule. And then, also, the initiatives that are in the strategic plan drive some of that alignment as well. And then, just as we would have teachers in the classroom differentiate their instruction for the students who are in front of them, our building leaders are doing very much the same thing, not only with students, but also with their staff as well, trying to meet the needs of all in, in their communities. So, let you guys jump in too and talk about that a little bit, about how you meet the needs.
I mean, I think it's an ongoing, and every school district has this. It's an ongoing balance of cohesion versus autonomy.
Right.
And I think every teacher wants to know what's expected of me, but they also want to be able to meet the needs of the kids in front of them on that given day. And so, I think at the school level, it is, it's, it's knowing that these are the expectations of the district, and we, and I think every single one of us believe and, and agree with the fact that we want our parents to know that no matter what school you're at, if it's in third grade, your child's going to have this high-quality education. But no matter what school you're at, there's a different group of kids in that classroom, and there are different teachers who have different talents that we want to make sure that they have a chance to show as well.
Well, one thing I definitely heard through the conversation tonight was that there's really been a drive to include families and an intentionality around welcoming families into the buildings, which I know has been different, you know, five years ago, we were in a totally different situation. So, bringing that back, I know, has been a little bit more challenging. So, really applaud you all for making an intentional effort to bring families back, to engage them in the learning, because I really do feel like that helps the students know that they have a kind of cohort of people who are partnering together for their best interests. So, thanks for, for doing that and making that big effort. Another question I had, kind of on a different topic, is we, we heard a lot about PLCs and the value that those are bringing. I know they've evolved over the last couple of years, and being in the third year, do you all feel like you've had the opportunity to really identify key metrics or goals and kind of setting those out for the PLCs to make sure that you're, that the staff is getting the value from that engagement? Or is that still something you all are working on and kind of setting metrics for PLCs? I would say at the district level, we give a pre and a post survey that really gathers feedback around DeFor's model for PLCs and really captures how impactful and what the learning is within the PLC as well, and also what the needs are. There are also teams in our buildings too where we see working really well and really collaboratively. And I would say anecdotally, we are looking at student achievement when we are seeing those teams. And we are seeing some pretty strong correlations there. When those PLC teams have lots of trust, they're talking about student work and student data and really using that to drive their, and differentiate their instruction as well.
I know that takes additional, PLCs are additional time, and you all mentioned a lot of the programming that you've been doing. I don't know how you find all the time in the day, including for the staff finding the time in the day. So, I'm curious if there is anything that we can think about or consider as a board for helping staff and you all as administrators with balancing that time, knowing that there's a lot of instructional time needed, a lot of programming time needed? Is there anything we should be thinking about or considering as we, you know, kind of partnering together as it relates to time? Not to put you all on the spot, so if no is the answer, that's fine.
Yeah, I, we all have different thoughts on it, but I think most importantly, we're all engaging in a process right now to talk to our teachers about that. And so, that voice is going to be really strong in, in whatever happens next. Like you said, there are certain things, like instructional time, based on resources, all of that. But hearing from our teachers about how we can best meet all the needs with the constraints we have, I think will be really powerful.
That's awesome. I'd love to hear the outcomes of some of those conversations, especially as they evolve and you guys work through, hey, what can we do? How can we support teachers and staff on that? Would love to hear the results of those conversations. Thank you.
Just another G Marie. Daylight savings time has gotten me, sorry, no. I know. It, it is always great to see you guys and to hear about all the great things going on in your building. One thing that I have a question about is the, the learning labs. I'm kind of confused on what exactly the learning lab is. So, can someone explain that?
Yeah, so the, and you guys can share more too. The literacy learning labs are, and I shared these early on as well.
With lit link?
Yes.
Okay. So, just remind me.
Yes, it is just reinforcing, you know, those big five, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary comprehension. And then, we're really diving into three, five, more vocabulary and grammar. And then, our K1, 2 has a strong focus on all of those five core.
So, is this when lit link comes to the school?
Yes.
Okay.
And it really is about those grade-level teams, getting that same learning at the same time. Previously, we were doing a lot of one-on-one job embedded coaching, but this makes sure that the learning is happening for the entire grade level, and then they're having those conversations in the PLC as well.
Okay. So, essentially then, what, what it would look like, that a third grader at Tillman and a third grader at Robinson would kind of be getting a similar-looking reading, writing instruction?
Yes. Learning around literacy for the adults, yes.
Okay. Um, thanks for, I knew I had learning lab, I know, yeah, I'm like, okay, just want to make sure. And then, the next thing, you know, I know that this was kind of talked about by Ms. Neiman, but that Tillman has done some research on movement and that kind of thing, and I know it was just kind of answered that ever, you know, we're asking our staff, but at the end of, after we've asked our staff and done the work, will that then be a unified decision that is at, like, the same for all buildings, or how does that?
I think we want to get that staff feedback first, and then we will talk, you know, together and collaborate around that feedback and that data. And then, the decision will probably be unified, I would say, but also want to make sure we're getting all that feedback before we make that decision.
Okay. Okay. And then, my last question is just around SEL. So, I heard several things going on with SEL, but I know at one point, we had an SEL curriculum, I think it was Next Steps?
Second Step.
Second, Next Steps. Some kind of steps. Is that, are we still using that?
Yes, Second Step is our SEL curriculum.
Okay, great. Thank you. Keep up the good work and take care of each other, because this is hard work. So, I like that, to hear that you guys are being a good team, because it's hard work. So, keep up the good work. Nicole?
Okay, so, thank you guys for being here and for presenting. I'm with Judy and everybody else. This is like one of the, the best nights when we get to hear and see what's else. This is like one of the, the best nights when we get to hear and see what's going on in the schools. Loved hearing about the student engagement and just believe that in every building, you're creating spaces where students and teachers and staff and even parents feel like they belong. I like the intentionality around the adult learning. I think everybody's doing a book study with their staff, which gives every, a chance for teachers to kind of reflect on their own practice and, and, and just collaborate on things that you don't necessarily have the chance to do within the classroom. So great job with that. I did have a question for Brian. I heard you mention a lock-in retreat. Can you tell us more about that?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to say something. I'm going to apologize to my colleagues right now, because it works. It is fantastic. It is basically all of our fifth graders who are able to be there, spend the night at school with us. And so we have, our fifth grade team leaves, leads a number of leadership challenges or leadership activities and conversations with kids. We meet at like 5:30. It's like usually it's the first or second week of August. And we do things throughout the evening. And then about 10:30 or 11, it's wind down time. And at about three or four, the last one falls asleep. But it is, I, I give tons of credit to our fifth grade teachers who do so much work. And it is really a fantastic opportunity for the teachers to start building those relationships with the kids before school even starts. And, you know, we, we try to involve some fun movement or, you know, we have pizza and that sort of thing. But, and, and actually, one year, two years ago, I guess it was, we went to the pool. And it's, it's just a fantastic opportunity for kids to enjoy each other and kind of kick off before the school year starts. And I, you know, it's, again, I've been around for a long time. So this is the second school I've had the opportunity to do something like this at with kids. And it, it doesn't work without committed teachers. And they are, they are the key to making this happen. But it is something that I think reaps benefits throughout the entire year.
Thank you. Good job, everybody.
Laura?
Thank you. I actually have a friend who has a fifth grader at Tillman, and she raves about the lock-in. And I have always thought, that sounds like a lot of work. So there were a couple of themes throughout your guys' schools that I just want to acknowledge. Everybody seems very focused on taking care of your staff. And I love that, whether it's trust or community building, or, you know, continuing education, everything that you're doing. I just think that that's wonderful for our schools and our children and our community. So I want to acknowledge that. And then one of the other themes that, you know, maybe to a lesser degree, but is in there, was family engagement. And I just want to echo back to something that Lisa said. I, I think coming out of COVID, it's been hard to climb, like claw our way back to families being more engaged with the schools and being in the buildings. And it's something that comes up in conversation. For me, being an elementary school parent at this time, it comes up in conversation all the time. It is something that builds community, and it's hard to get back there. And so I just want to acknowledge that it's difficult to like figure out how to get back there. But I really appreciate those efforts. And it goes such a long way to building community and helping parents make friends with other parents. And once they're friends, it's easier to get them to volunteer for things. You know, it's just, it's a whole thing. So I just appreciate, you know, that we're on that path. So one thing that I just wanted to say for the future, going back to that you guys get together and you do these best practices sharing and this idea sharing, something that I just love in general from our cabinet, from our, any staff, anyone that comes and presents, anything that we do for the district, as we learn things, or we get new ideas, or we overcome a challenge, when we have those updates and we can bring that back to the community and show that kind of growth, I think that is really impactful. So I would just say, next year, maybe, like, if there are any things that over the course of the year, you guys share with each other that spreads, and because somebody did something positive, I would love to hear those stories next year. I just think that is really impactful to hear, you know, those things that spread because they were so good. So I just wanted to mention that. Hold on, my computer did the thing where it, the screen went away. And now it's frozen. Okay. So then I remember my other two questions though. So my first question was around the win time. And this kind of builds on what I was just saying about the idea sharing. So I know, Brian, you were saying that, you know, it being a little bit newer, there's been some bumps in the road and some challenges. I was just going to see if anyone wanted to give an example of a challenge that you guys overcame, or like a change to something. I know it's kind of putting you on the spot. If you want to, we can skip it. But if there was something readily available. Or not. I can go to my next.
No, I, like, I can, I can jump in. I, I think just sort of at Tillman, when we, we initially started talking about win time being a thing, there was an initial reticence to, to, to give up the students in your classroom to go to another classroom, right? I mean, our, our teachers, for better or worse, take, they, they love the students that are in their classroom, and they, and they don't want to just eat, really, you know, readily give them away to other folks. Like, they, they want to be responsible for their learning and their social emotional learning and academics and all of that. So we had to have a lot of conversations around what that looks like and why, why there was value in, in giving that up. And it, it, it's a testament to the PLC process. It's a testament to, you know, I think a culture that Brian has come in and instilled in Tillman. I, I think there was a lot that is, that has happened that got them there. But they are now more comfortable. And not only more comfortable, it, it happens in all of our grade levels, all of our, our teams. So that's, that's just the example that came to mind.
No, that's great. And that probably ties into what, you know, Dr. Harris was saying about building trust with the other teachers and what a lot of you guys are doing. So I think that's a great example. My last question was about the learning labs. And I've talked to you about this, Liz, but just since it was up there on the screen, the prioritization of reading out of physical books. We hear from our kids all the time about reading on the iPads. Is the physical books specific to like that hour? Like, that's specific to that one lesson? And then the other reading is like the other parts of the day? And I guess, I guess I'm just wondering, how, if that's the prioritization, and that's what we're hoping to do, how are we guiding teachers? Or where's the accountability? Or like, how are we kind of reinforcing that that's the goal, I guess? Or how are we trying to keep that? And then like, within that is also, is that really the guideline for that specific ELA lesson? And then outside of that, not so much? Or, I don't know if anyone can speak to that? Or not?
Looking this way. Yes. It, it, I think it's, I think it's across the board. I think at, at least at Tillman, we talk about the fact that you have, you have those just write books that are at your, your growing level, I guess. But you also have comfort and fun books. And some of those comfort and fun books are easy for you. And they're just things that you can, you can get through. And it's not really that challenging for you to read. And some of them may be a digital book. And, and I'm going to be honest with you and say that probably two-thirds, maybe three-fourths of the time that our students are reading on an iPad, they're listening to it, which has its place. It absolutely does. But there's a different, different things happen in the brain when you're, when you're reading on your own, and frankly, when you're reading from a book than, than on an iPad. And so we talk with our kids about that. And we tell them, there's a place for this. And we want our kids to know that it's not like you can't ever read on an iPad. But we do want our kids, and I think we've come to realize that our reading stamina has changed over years. And we think some of that is because of the iPad. Some of that is other things too. But it's a lot easier for our kids to start flipping through on an iPad or anything digital than it is for them when they're supposed to be reading in a book. Now, don't get me wrong, kids have always been very good at having well-developed avoidance strategies. But I, we, we want our kids to have that reading stamina. And, and I think at least right now, we're saying, let's, let's spend a majority of our time in paper books, reading those, and, and then finding the time for the other books as well.
That's great. And I have a follow-up question, because I love what you said about speaking to the kids and coaching them a little bit and helping them understand, hey, these, these different methods of reading do different things for your brain. Is that something that comes out of the learning labs that, that teachers are getting training on? Like, that that's part of their lessons to pass on to kids as well? Like, is that, could we consistently say that most kids in our elementary schools are getting that part of the lesson of these are different types of reading and they do different types of things?
I think we're getting better at that, Laura.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Thank you.
So I'll wrap this up. Great questions, everybody. This is my fourth elementary school presentation. And every year, I think it gets better. And one of the things that really struck me tonight is the cohesion you have and the joy that you have at your schools. And that's leadership from Dr. Rumpus and Dr. Granau and all of you. So thank you for that, because that really matters to our kiddos. One, one request I would have of you is if you could include us in your weekly newsletters or monthly newsletters, because I will hear about this great art show or this musical, and I would love to see it. And so I'm, you know, I'm not coming to spy or anything. I'm coming to see the cool things you're doing. So, you know, musicals, art shows, I went to a couple of the Fourth Fridays last year, and it was just a blast. So if you can do that, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Dr. Rumpus?
Yeah, a, a lot of the comments you had in the celebrations are, are things I would have said. I, I think one of the things that's so important and what makes this group amazing is that while each building had about 10 minutes to highlight, you know, two or three key things under each of those buckets, those were a dozen or so of the hundreds of things that they have going on. You know, the strategic plans, as you have seen, are multi-page documents, and there's no end to the work. And while they highlighted this, and this itself could be a full-time job each and every day, there were 75 other decisions they made this morning before breakfast was over, that are significant, that are around teaching and learning, that are around meeting all of our students' needs. I, I love, because I believe in it, I agree, that in order to have those expectations of our students, you have to create the conditions for your staff to be successful first. And I know that all five schools are doing that. The word intentionality came to mind over and over again. And back to Ms. Neiman's question, which is great, and really, I think is the, the crux of the work, but that idea of loose and tight. So what are those expectations that we have that should be consistent across all five elementary schools, all nine of our schools, and where are the opportunities that schools can differentiate and do things to really meet the needs of their students and staff? And that will continue to be a challenge as our demographics change, as the expectations on the school system changes, as leaders change, teachers change, our students. But I know that we have the right leaders doing that work. And so thank you to the 10 of you. I know eight, 11, to be at a board meeting is late for you. We get this privilege a couple of times a month, but you only have to do it once a year. And I, and I think it's important to say too, we forget, because we get to do this often, that it's nerve-wracking to ask them to come and to have to speak in front of you. And I have no doubt that you could have asked them questions detailed around specific data, specific students, and they know that, because that's the work that they're doing each and every day. And so thank you to the 10 of you for being here. And thank you, Board, for providing us the time to come and share the great work happening at our elementary schools.
Okay, we're almost done. 3.01, future events. Election day is tomorrow. Staff Development Day, no school for students. November 10th, really important Parent Speaker Series, Suicide or Anxiety. November 11th is Veterans Day. November 19th, we have Kirkwood Schools Community Conversations at Pioneer Bakery from 8 to 9:30? Eight to 10? Okay. Turkey Day Spirit Week, Thanksgiving recess. And then 3.02, the Notice of Board Candidate Filing. That starts in December. We have a couple seats that will be open. So if you know anybody. And our next meeting is on November 17th. It will be a business meeting. And we are adjourned. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.